The Monday, August 1st, 2022 Regular Meeting of the Gardner City Council will come to order. The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Present.
Counsel Vudra?
Present.
Counsel Craig Cormier?
Present.
Counsel Ronald Cormier?
Present.
Counsel Darren Lawitz?
Present.
Counsel Harder?
Present.
Counsel Heath?
Present.
Counsel Mack?
Present.
Counsel Tyros?
Present.
Counsel Alaw. President and presentors.
Present. Please rise to recite the opening prayer and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Almighty God, we thank thee for bringing us together this evening, inspire us toward the deeds of sound decisions, and direct us towards the attainment of wisdom through the government. We pray thee to bless and protect all the people of our city, and to show guidance and inspire us to help to make difference in the community and property amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcement of open meeting recordings. Any person may take a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium subject to reasonable requirements of the chair as to the number, placement, and operation of equipment used so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Any person intending to make such recordings shall notify the chair forthwith. All documents and exhibits used or referenced at the meeting must be submitted in duplicate to the chair as they become part of the meeting minutes pursuant to General Law Chapter 30A Section 20. Is anyone here recording tonight's meeting? There are no, we'll be going with the reading of the minutes of prior meetings. We have no minutes this evening. At this time, I would like to take item number 10767 out of order and consider it at this time. It is on page three of our agenda. It is a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Rocky to the position of Police K-9 as member of the Gardner Police K-9 Unit for a permanent term. At this time, I'd like to ask interim Police Chief Philip Kearns to come forward. You can have right to the microphone right there. Right behind you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
And thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, members of council, for having us. I'll be brief. This is something we've been waiting for at the Gardner Police for a long time. It happened before my tenure there. We were lucky enough to get a grant. We've got a grant to acquire this dog through the work of these gentlemen here, former Chief Alpano, my two lieutenants, and a bunch of people at the Gardner Police. We were able to select the dog handler. They tell me it was a very difficult decision, but we selected Sir Willis. And we were able to acquire this dog, Rock. And they were able to be admitted to the Boston Police K-9 Academy. They did 14 weeks of training. They came online the first week of July, and within one hour of the first day, this dog made a spectacular trek. It caused us to be able to charge four people who broke into one apartment, and we got back all the stuff. It was a cooperative effort between the dog, Officer Willis, other police officers, and the state police. But it was a great first day. More importantly, well, not more importantly, but as important, you might know that the dog was named after Rock Barrio, the dearly beloved late deputy chief of the police department. And so we thought it was important that his family be notified about tonight. And so we have his sister and his wife, I mean, his brother, rather, and his wife right here. And we asked them to come, and they were more gracious about coming. So we appreciate you putting this out of order and making time for Rocky and Lagrilla. Submit him to you for a permanent appointment.
Thank you, Chief Kearns. Mary Nicholson.
Thank you very much, Madam President and councilors. Chief Kearns kind of hit the nail on the head with everything here. This is something that when I was first elected, we started looking at for the police department as something to do. And as the chief said, the Stanton Foundation did graciously provide us all the funding for this through a grant that they received. The Stanton Foundation has helped us in several ways in the past here in the city of Gardner with both the original grant for the dog park, the new upgrades of the dog park that are taking place, and now through us being able to get Rocky here to add it as an asset and member of the Gardner Police Department. So we're looking forward to seeing him continue the good work that he's already done. As the chief said, he's already shown his capabilities in helping us here after he got out of the 12 weeks of the K-9 Academy in Boston. I do want to also thank the several members of the Gardner Police Department and the dispatch department who are here with us this evening, who joined for having Rocky being barked in to the Gardner Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Nicholson. So again, item 10767, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Rocky to the position of Police K-9 as a member of the Gardner Police K-9 Unit for a permanent term. Is there a motion? Counsel Tyros?
Move the appointment to be certified.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Tyros, seconded by Counselor Mack. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes. At this time, we will take a brief recess of the meeting to swear Rocky in. And we will reconvene after the swearing is completed and call the meeting back to order at that time. Okay, Rocky? Can you tell me, sorry, that you bear to the allegiance of the United States of America? Because they call on you to watch the Constitution and uphold the Constitution and law thereof. I'm not sure if I'm allowed to cut him or not. I know, I wasn't sure.
Yes.
Counsel Boudreaux?
Yes.
Counsel Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Ron Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Dernawitz?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel Matt?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
Yes. Ten years, the motion passes. Communications, item 10745, a measure authorizing acceptance of donations and gifts for use by Gardner Fire Department. Counsel Ron Cormier?
Yes, from time to time, we have to pass the allowance to accept gifts. And in this particular case, as you've received, and also Planet Fitness has donated equipment to the fire department for their benefit. So, two things. One, it gives us an opportunity to thank people publicly and recognize the good nature of some of the citizens in Gardner. So I make a motion that we pass the acceptance.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel Dernawitz, to pass the order is there, I'm sorry, to authorize the acceptance. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes. Item 10746, a measure authorizing acceptance of donations and gifts for use by Gardner Senior Center. Report from the Finance Committee, Counsel Ron Cormier.
Again, the Finance Committee is favorable. You've received a list, a fairly lengthy list of the gifts and donations received by the Senior Center. We've had the same thing with the animal shelter, and it just astonishes me at how generous the people of this community are. And I want to publicly thank them for giving this. And again, I move the measure to authorize the acceptance.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel Dernawitz, to authorize the acceptance of the donations. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes. Item 10747, a measure declaring surplus for the purpose of disposal of land and buildings on Conan Street. Counsel Dernawitz?
Thank you. Counsel, on the, excuse me, one second, the June 6 meeting of this year, the counsel declared this parcel surplus. After further review, city assessor had found that the lot is not buildable, therefore, the price was reduced. The Finance Committee was unanimously in favor of allowing the sale at the new minimum price of $15,000, and I move the passage of the measure.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Dernawitz, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier, to pass the measure. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes. Item 10748, order of taking for land and buildings by eminent domain at 94 Pleasant Street. Counsel Dernawitz?
Thank you. This is a property that has not paid real estate taxes since 1991, has been in Land Court there since 1996. We were informed that it's actually the longest Land Court case in the history of Massachusetts Land Court. There are a significant amount of back taxes owed, and while the situation is unfortunate, we're allowed to subtract those back taxes from the fair market value, which equates to taking the property for zero dollars. The goal here is to improve the area and get it back on the tax rolls. Finance Committee was unanimously in favor, and I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Dernawitz, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier, to pass the order. Is there a discussion on the motion?
I might just add that this particular property was already identified in the urban renewal plan, so it fits into our plan also.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes. Item 10749, a notification from the mayor regarding the Votes Act, Chapter 92 of the Votes Act of 2022, impact on Gardner. Report from the Finance Committee, Counsel Ron Cormier.
Finance Committee is favorable. You've all received the synopsis of this new vote act. It's fairly lengthy, but it's fairly well explained. There are steps that we'll have to take. The mayor has provided us with this information, so I make a motion to replace the document on file.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel Dernawitz, to place the notification on file. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes. Item 10750, a notification from the mayor regarding fleet status update of the Gardner Fire Department. Report from the Finance Committee, Counsel Ron Cormier.
Finance Committee received a report from the mayor, which was shared with you, how we intend to use some of the ARP monies for purchasing of new equipment. This is the plan. We hope to get a plan where we can replace pieces of equipment every five years. These are capital pieces, they're incredibly expensive. But thanks to the chief for putting this together, and he gives us a better understanding of what is going on. So I make a motion to replace this on file.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel Dernawitz, to place the notification on file. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes. Item 10751, a notification from the mayor regarding receipt of Medicaid reimbursement payment. Report from the Finance Committee, Counsel Ron Cormier.
Finance Committee is favorable. Again, this informs us of a good news thing from the insurance point of view. So I make a motion to replace it on file.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel Dernawitz, to place the notification on file. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes. Item 10752, a notification from the mayor regarding the transfer station revenue trends. Report from Finance Committee, Counsel Ron Cormier.
Finance Committee is favorable. Indicates that there's been actually increase in fees collected at the transfer station, making it more self-sustaining. So I make a motion to replace this on file.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel Dernawitz, to place the notification on file. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion passes. Item 10753, a notification from the mayor regarding FY 2021 free cash review. Report from the Finance Committee, Counsel Dernawitz.
I'm sorry, where were we? No, that's Ron, I'm sorry.
Counsel Ron, Counsel Ron Cormier?
To sum up, the number of documents we're placing on file, I really want to thank the mayor for doing this. It's really made it almost a mission of his to keep us informed and transparency. And this gives us an idea where all of free cash went over the last year. Again, it's keeping us informed, and I thank him for that. So I make a motion to replace this document on file also.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel Dernawitz, to place the notification on file. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes. Item 10754, a measure authorizing acceptance of donations and gifts for use by Gardner Centennial Celebration. Report from the Finance Committee, Counsel Dernawitz.
Thank you. This is the creation of a gift account for the Centennial Celebration Committee, so they're able to solicit and accept donations. Finance Committee was unanimously in favor, and I moved to authorize the account creation.
Motion made by Counsel Dernawitz, seconded by Counsel Heath, to authorize the acceptance of donations and gifts for use by Gardner Centennial Celebration. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion passes. Item 10755, a notification from the mayor regarding air quality improvement at the Gardner Fire Department headquarters. Report from the Public Safety Committee, Counsel Craig Cormier.
Guess the mayor, who speaks?
Mayor Nicholson, yeah, go ahead. This is another question. Thank you very much, Madam President. Back when we still had CARES Act funding to use that the federal government gave us following the COVID-19 pandemic, we used some of that grant funding that we received to do an air quality test in some of our buildings. Particularly, we did this at the fire station, because that is the building that we actually have employees sleeping in on a regular basis. They conducted a full air quality study of the fire department's headquarters. That has been included in your packet for information. There were some improvements that needed to be suggested. However, there were no red flags that came up, if you will, just those things to help make things better. We did purchase the air filters through that same CARES Act grant funding. All the work that we've done over there has been mainly grant funding. There is work that is still on the list that still needs to be done. A lot of the issues that we're seeing over there are due to the leaky roof situation that we're seeing over there. The roof was patched in the early 2000s. However, the rest of the roof, aside from those patches, is original to when the fire station was constructed in the 1980s. So we are looking at potentially, within the next 10 years, looking at needing a new roof on the fire station. Right now, in order to identify where those leaks are currently occurring, the sheet rock and insulation have been removed from the ceiling in the apparatus bay, so that we can actually watch where the leaks are coming in when it is raining. That was one of the main things that was highlighted in the report. The other thing that was there is just making sure that if any holes were drilled in the walls that separate the apparatus bay from the living quarters and the office spaces, particularly if a pipe needed to be added or something like that to connect in there, that those are fully sealed and cocked off, to make sure that there's no airflow. Because the main contaminants that we see in a fire station in general, not in our, in specific, are where the apparatus bays are, if there's any exhaust fumes or anything like that. We want to make sure we're stopping all of those from getting into the building completely. Like I said, there were no major concerns, there were no major contaminations, there were no major readings of any different chemicals there, but just suggestions on how we can improve the quality of the air for our employees. And again, mainly because that's our only building, we have people staffed 24/7 and that are actually sleeping there. So I just wanted to make sure that the council had the full report there. That way, if we do go for something down the line, like one of the bigger projects, like a new roof on the station, or as the report or the audit may suggest later, any additions or anything like that, that the documented reasons behind that are presented upfront for the council. But again, any large, major renovations wouldn't be for another 5 to 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize, I had not been referred to your committee as a notification today. So thank you, Mayor Nicholson, for the explanation to the council. It's in parentheses, has Safety Committee, because it's something that falls under the Safety Committee. But I apologize for putting Counsel Craig Cormier off the spot there. Is there a motion? Or any questions?
Move to send, to accept and to file.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Craig Cormier, seconded by Counsel Boudreaux, to place the notification on file. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion passes. Item 10756, a notification from the mayor regarding Station 1 repair and remediation work. Mayor Nicholson?
Thank you very much, Madam President. This is also just an update to the City Council on something that I had communicated with the council before. The oil tank at Station 1, which is also referred to as the South Gardner Fire Station, over the winter time, had a malfunction. One of the emergency pumps malfunctioned and pulled in oil to that pump, but because the generator itself was not running, the oil was shot out of the vent pipe, for lack of a better term. There was no overly major contamination that was found. We did hire a licensed site professional through the insurance company that we have to do a full remediation of the area for what was contaminated in the soil. That work has fully been completed, and they are in the monitoring stages. All of those monitorings that we've done have come back showing very positive results. The oil tank itself has been fully removed, so this will not be something that happens again. This did happen, this was noticed on a routine inspection, as that building is required to be inspected by the Gardner Fire Department every day, twice a day. So they do do routine checks of that building. It did notice that the oil was lower one time, but they thought there was just the heat going on, and then it came back the next day and the oil tank was empty. So that is what made us notice that this was a thing, so we were able to get to it in a quick manner. I do want to thank our fire department, our building commissioner, Roland Jean, and our then-city engineer, now DPW Business Administrator, Chris Coughlin, for really all the work in getting that done with Maya, our insurance company. Again, the entire cost of this was fully covered 100% by our insurance. The city did not have to put a penny into this cleanup work that's there, and it has all been completed. The final report, which is with the City Council this evening in the packet. So again, you had that for your information, in case any of our constituents asked. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Nicholson. Is there a motion?
Move to place the notification on file.
Motion made by Counsel Craig Cormier, seconded by Counsel Boudreaux, to place the notification on file. Is there a discussion on the motion?
Madam President, one of the things I neglected to mention is, while the oil tank is removed, at a couple council meetings ago, funding was approved to install two modine heaters that are propane powered at the fire station just to heat the apparatus bay, because that's all that was needed. That's actually our sustainability plan moving forward. Since we no longer have that oil tank, to make sure that we don't have an oil leak like this again moving forward, those propane tanks that are powering those modine heaters are going to heat it, so there will be no oil at all in the building, so we can make sure that this doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Nicholson. Is there a discussion? Counsel Boone?
Yeah, Madam President, through the chair to Mayor Nicholson. Is there gas one, natural gas one, or what part, the east part?
There is natural gas there. It's mainly where we didn't know what was happening to the building moving forward. The temporary propane tanks are being there outside. It's actually cheaper to rent the propane tanks for five years than it would be to tie into the gas in the street. So where the future of the building is up in the air, we didn't want to do anything long-term and spend the money on something just to go back and sell the building.
Very good, thank you.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Item 10757, a ruling from the Attorney General relative to an open meeting law complaint. Mayor Nicholson?
Thank you, Madam President. As the individual who chaired the joint convention of the School Committee and the City Council, that there was an open meeting law complaint filed by Mr. Scott Graves in early March, I believe, the Attorney General's office did send us back, saying that this file has been closed out, the actions taken by the joint convention are sufficient, and there's no further action needed to be taken. As the Attorney General's office felt that everything that was done by the joint convention was sufficient to meet all needs of the requirements of the open meeting law, and there was no violation of the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Nicholson. Is there a motion? Counsel Dernawitz?
I move to place this on file.
Sir.
Motion made by Counsel Dernawitz, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier, to place the item on file. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Item 10760, a measure confirming the police officer assignments to polling locations. Mayor Nicholson?
Thank you very much, Madam President. This is a requirement of the Votes Act that we talked about earlier that was placed on file. One of the things that the state legislature has added to the laws is that the City Council approve which police officer is assigned to which polling location on Election Day. This is something that came up during the debates with the Police Reform Bill, back when that was being done, as the role of the police officers who are stationed as detail at the polling locations, they're the ones to make sure the doors get locked at 8 o'clock, the doors open, that things are done in an orderly fashion, and those who go in to vote, as a way to make sure that quality officers are assigned to those positions. The law now states that the City Council does have to now fully approve every officer that is assigned to work and when they are allowed to work at those polling locations. This is something we don't really have to worry about in Gardner, and we haven't had to deal with in Gardner in terms of any issues with interactions between our officers and the voters. But nevertheless, it is something that is required of all municipalities now by this state statute. And with the September primary election coming up for the state election, this is something that has to be done before that election takes place. And where that election takes place, the day after the first council meeting in September, it's just too close to that one, so that's why we're presenting this to the council this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Nicholson. Is there a motion? Counsel Dernawitz?
I move to confirm the police officer assignments to the polling locations.
Motion made by Counsel Dernawitz, seconded by Counsel Tyros, to confirm the assignments. Is there a discussion on the motion?
Madam President?
Counsel Boone?
What happens if the officer's sick that day?
Mayor Nicholson?
That is something that we will have to look into. I believe there's a lot of different municipalities that are also asking that same question. There's flaws in every rule of law that happens, and I think those are one of the ones that we'll find there. I'm sure the Secretary of State's office will come out with some type of guidance with that.
Right.
But we'll deal with it as that comes. And there is a council meeting the day before.
Counsel Boudreaux?
Just to kind of cover ourselves on there, I am a town clerk during the day and have been following along the town clerk listserv. One of the ways that we can go about that, and I do have verbiage, but I can't get in my email right now, is by allowing, in the motion, with if that situation were to occur, to basically allow replacements at the jurisdiction of the police chief. That is what we did in Princeton, where I work, and that is where, what I know a lot of other town and city clerks were able to do with their, either city council or board of selectmen, so that's also an option as well.
Counselor? Further discussion? Mayor Nicholson?
Madam President, I would ask that that language do be added to the motion, as that does, that is a law.
Good amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Mayor Nicholson. So is there any further discussion, or is it an amendment to the motion? Counsel Boudreaux?
I'd like to amend the motion on the table by adding, in the event of an absence of a scheduled City of Gardner police officer, that the fulfillment of said duty is the, is in the jurisdiction of the police chief.
Second.
Motion made by, so the motion to amend is made by Counsel Boudreaux, seconded by Counsel Heath. To, in the event that one of the police officers is not available, that is, on the approved list, we use the discretion at the, the police chief's discretion to replace that police officer. Counsel Boudreaux?
I can send you verbiage.
Just email me. That is the motion to amend. Is there a discussion on the motion to amend? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Are there any further amendments? Okay. So on a motion made by Counsel Dernawitz, seconded by Counsel Tyros, to, to pass the measure confirming the police officer's assignments to polling locations as amended. Is there a discussion on the motion? Counsel Dernawitz?
I just, is this, it sounds great to me, but is this, has this been approved by the Secretary of State or anywhere else? Is that, that what's has happened, or is it just, people are hoping it will be approved by the Secretary of State? Do we, do we know?
I'm quite sure that, I can't state that it has been approved by the Secretary of State's office, but I know many municipalities have.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a good, yeah, I think it's a good fallback, just safety net. But I was just curious where it was. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Item number 10758, a measure confirming the mayor's appointments of election officers for 2022, 2023. Counsel Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. This item is for the appointment of over 70 individuals to the position of election officer to fulfill the roles of warden, clerk, and inspector needed to hold an election of the five wards of Gardner. And large majority of these individuals reside in Gardner, with some coming from neighboring towns and cities. This item will not be following the normal appointments committee referral process due to its unique nature, the previously mentioned requirements from the state's recently passed Votes Act that went to law last month, and the necessary vote to gain compliance before the September primary. That is why we're bringing it, or has been brought directly to the council, and I would move that the appointment be certified.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Tyros, seconded by Counsel Mack, to confirm the mayor's appointments of election officers for 2022, 2023. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes. Item 10761, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Nancy Bender to the position of bandstand committee member for term expiring July 25, 2025. Counsel Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. I move to refer this item to the Appointments Committee for study and report.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Tyros, seconded by Counsel Mack, to refer the item to the Appointments Committee for further study and report. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion passes. Item 10762, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Edward Vipond to the position of bandstand committee member for term expiring July 25, 2025. Counsel Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. I move to refer to the Appointments Committee.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Tyros, seconded by Counsel Mack, to refer the item to the Appointments Committee. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion passes. Item 10763, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Donna Russo to the position of bandstand committee member for term expiring July 25, 2025. Counsel Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. I move to refer to the Appointments Committee.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Tyros, seconded by Counsel Mack, to refer the item to the Appointments Committee. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion passes. Item 10764, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Ann Hurst to the position of disability commission member for term expiring July 25, 2025. Counsel Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. I move to refer this item to the Appointments Committee.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Tyros, seconded by Counsel Mack, to refer the item to the Appointments Committee. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion passes. Petitions, applications, communications, et cetera. Item number 10759, a measure relative to the September 6, 2022 state primary.
Make a motion that we accept the, the election process as described for the state primary.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel Tyros, to accept the election, state election process as described in the measure. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Item 10765, an open meeting law complaint filed by Gregory Deen. I would just like to describe this complaint quickly, as I have submitted a proposed response. That proposed response to this has been reviewed by the Law Department. It is a draft, and again, it is a proposed response. This is a open meeting law complaint that was filed over a conversation that had a city council meeting, and all of the information is in the packet. Is there a motion? Counsel Dernawitz?
I move to approve the response.
Motion made by Counsel Dernawitz, seconded by Counsel Tyros, to approve the proposed response. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion passes. Item 10766, an open meeting law complaint filed by Gregory Deen. This was relative to the Public Safety Committee. Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes, we met on this Friday and had the discussion on it. I have written a response to this item and submitted it to the Law Department, so it can be handed back to the state and the complaint, and I move to approve the response.
I think the motion is to place it on file, as it is the Public Safety Committee. Yeah, so this would be.
Change my motion to put it on file.
Okay. Motion made by Counselor Craig Cormier?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Boone, to accept and place the complaint on file. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion passes. Reports of standing committees, appointments, item 10735, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Lauren Walter to the position of permanent police sergeant. Counsel Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. Unfortunately, Officer Walter was unable to attend our meeting due to a scheduling conflict with work. His appointment, his temporary appointment has not yet expired, and we expect to discuss this appointment at our August meeting, so respectfully request more time.
There's no objection. The committee will be granted more time. The committee will be granted more time. Item number 10736, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Paulette Burns to the position of Board of Assessors member for term expiring July 1, 2025. Counsel Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. The Appointments Committee met with the mayor and discussed Miss Burns' service to the city as a member of the Board of Assessors. She has been a member since 2004. The mayor reported that both he and the city assessor, Ms. Kumar, recommended Ms. Burns, and that she has served the city quite well. Committee voted unanimously to recommend, therefore, I move the appointment be certified.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Tyros, seconded by Counsel Mack, to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion passes. Item, Finance Committee, item 10737, an ordinance to amend the Code of the City of Gardner, Section 44-171, entitled Compensation in Lieu of Paid Holidays. Report from the Finance Committee, Counsel Dernawitz?
Thank you, Madam President. Stated in the packet, this is to remove all positions except the fire chief from the compensation in lieu of paid holiday ordinance. Either the chief or the deputy chief work holidays, part of their job, job duties, and are on call during emergencies, just like other department heads. The fire chief, however, does work holidays, and therefore receives an added stipend for those days. All the other positions are governed under collective bargaining agreements. other positions are governed under collective bargaining agreements. The Finance Committee was unanimously favored. I believe, he says it's the first printing, Madam President?
Yes.
And I move to amend, to send this amended order to first printing.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Darnell Owens, seconded by Counselor Ron Cormier to send the ordinance amendment to first printing. Is there a discussion on the motion? Mayor Nicholson?
Thank you, Madam President. Just for further clarification, I know Counselor Darnell Owens did say this, any employees that are considered union employees in any of our public safety departments that are covered by a collective bargaining or union contract that actually do work holidays will still get this benefit. It's the ordinance is supposed to cover anyone who works on a holiday that is not a union member, so I just wanted to make sure that was clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Nicholson. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes. Item 10741, a measure to elect a city treasurer and city collector of taxes effective August 19th, 2022. Report from the Finance Committee?
Madam President?
Counselor Ron Cormier?
Yes, I'm going to nominate our current city treasurer, Jennifer Demick, to the position. This is one of three positions that we, as councilors-elect, we take very seriously. Ms. Demick has served in the role of city treasurer for quite a few years, a nineteen-and-a-half-year employee of the city, and what really reflects upon the work of Ms. Demick and the other members of our finance departments is the most recent audit that we had had no findings whatsoever. In all my years, I've never heard of that. Perfectly clean bill of health, if you will, which tells us that both our auditing and treasurer's office are doing an exceptional job. So it's almost unheard of to have that. So it's my pleasure to place a nomination, name Jennifer Demick, to position of city treasurer.
Thank you, Counselor Cormier. So at this time, I'm going to open nominations, and nominations are now in order for the office of city treasurer and city collector of taxes. The nominations are now open. Counselor Cormier?
And that report was on behalf of the Finance Committee, speaking unanimously on that board. So I nominate Jennifer Demick.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion to close nominations?
Counselor, so Counselor Ron Cormier nominates Jennifer Demick for a three-year term effective August 19th, 2022. Any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? There appearing to be no further nominations. I will entertain a motion to close nominations.
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Boudreaux, seconded by Counselor Darnell Owens to close nominations. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Nominations are now closed. When the clerk calls the roll, please state the name of the nominee of your choice.
Counselor Boone?
Jennifer Demick.
Counselor Boudreaux?
Jennifer Demick.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Jennifer Demick.
Counselor Ron Cormier?
Jennifer Demick.
Counselor Darnell Owens?
Jennifer Demick.
Counselor Harder?
Jennifer Demick.
Counselor Heath?
Jennifer Demick.
Counselor Mack?
Jennifer Demick.
Counselor Tyros?
Jennifer Demick.
President, please.
Jennifer Demick. Ten votes for Jennifer Demick. Jennifer Demick has been elected as city treasurer and city collector of taxes. Ms. Demick is present this evening, so at this time, we will take a brief recess of the meeting to swear her in, and we will reconvene after the swearing-in is completed and call the meeting back to order at that time.
[applause] [inaudible]
Aye, Stephen Eng.
Aye.
Jennifer Demick.
Desolately swear.
Desolately swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially-
That I will faithfully and impartially-
Perform the duties of city treasurer-
Perform the duties of city treasurer-
According to all and the best of my abilities.
According to all and the best of my abilities.
Agreed.
Thank you.
[applause]
I'm going to call the meeting back to order at this time. Item 10768, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, chapter 171, section 68, entitled Compensation Schedule Attachment A, Mayor, Attachment B, City Council, and Attachment D, School Committee. Report from the Finance Committee? Counselor Ron Cormier?
Yes, Counselor Mack presented this to the Finance Committee at the last meeting, and we were quite pleased to receive it. It's thorough, it's encompassing, and our recommendation, you know, along with thanking her for presenting this, is to have this removed from the calendar at this time and present it in January when we take up ordinance number 171-66, which requires us to review these salaries. She's doing the city a great justice by presenting this, and she's, and she's laid out the case quite well. Very often in the past, we've politicized this. We've not attacked, or not attacked, but taken care of the raises for the mayor's office, for example, on a timely manner, so that when we've had to do it, it becomes a huge increase. And her package sends us in the right direction, I believe. And so at this time, I, not just thanking her, but I'd like this to be removed from the calendar at this time and brought up in January with the Finance Committee when we attack ordinance number 171-66.
Counselor Cormier, is that-
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Ron Cormier, seconded by Counselor Boudreaux to remove the item from the calendar and take it up in January when we entertain ordinance 171-66. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Public Service Committee, we held a public hearing early this evening on item 10740, a petition by National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated, Keys Road, to relocate one jointly owned pole on Keys Road beginning at a point approximately 700 feet southeast of the center line of the intersection of West Street. Relocate pole number two across the street to accommodate for bridge construction upgrade to a 45-foot Class II. Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. Speaking on behalf of the Public Service Committee, when we had met last week to discuss this item, the committee had a few questions. Some of them were answered today at the public hearing, and I respectfully request more time on this item for the committee to meet again with some of the documentation that was brought up today.
If there is no objection, the committee will be granted more time. The committee will be granted more time. There is no unfinished business and matters for reconsideration. We're moving into new business. Counselor Heath?
No new business today. Madam President, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. No new council business this evening.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Darnell Owens?
I have no new city council business. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Boone?
No new, excuse me, no new business. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Boudreaux?
With us talking about the Votes Act tonight, I just wanted to shine a little spotlight on the new things the Vote Act kind of made permanent from the COVID era that did put a lot of additional burden on the clerk's office. So I would like to thank Clerk Sarah Phan and her assistant clerks, and her senior work-offs, and her staff for doing all of these new and additional things that are very time-consuming, such as process the early voting and mail-in ballots, and holding additional early voting timeframes. It's not something that we all thought we would be doing when we started this year or when we budgeted for this year, but it's something clerks in this, and clerks offices in this building and across the Commonwealth are all dealing with with a smile. So thank you to the clerk's office for just taking this on with a smile on your face. Additionally, I'd like to thank the mayor and the DPW and everybody that's been doing all of the work. A significant amount of the main roads in Ward III look better by the day. Downtown looks nice. The road in front of the Acadian Club is shining like a diamond, and there is a lot of just better and better things going on in our whole city and in Ward III, which encompasses a large part of the center of town. With that being said, that's all. I'd like to thank you, and I hope you have a great month. See you in September.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Harder?
No new business, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Ron Cormier?
No new business. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Boudreaux?
With us talking about the Votes Act tonight, I just wanted to shine a little spotlight on the new things the Vote Act kind of made permanent from the COVID era that did put a lot of additional burden on the clerk's office. So I would like to thank Clerk Sarah Phan and her assistant clerks, and her senior work-offs, and her staff for doing all of these new and additional things that are very time-consuming, such as process the early voting and mail-in ballots, and holding additional early voting timeframes. It's not something that we all thought we would be doing when we started this year or when we budgeted for this year, but it's something clerks in this, and clerks offices in this building and across the Commonwealth are all dealing with with a smile. So thank you to the clerk's office for just taking this on with a smile on your face. Additionally, I'd like to thank the mayor and the DPW and everybody that's been doing all of the work. A significant amount of the main roads in Ward III look better by the day. Downtown looks nice. The road in front of the Acadia Club is shining like a diamond, and there is a lot of just better and better things going on in our whole city and in Ward III, which encompasses a large part of the center of town. With that being said, that's all. I'd like to thank you, and I hope you have a great month. See you in September.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Harder?
No new business, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Ron Cormier?
No new business. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. I have a couple new business items. Just a reminder, on behalf of the clerk, that our next council meeting is on a Wednesday. It's Wednesday, September 7th, so for the City Council and the public watching this evening, Monday, the 5th is Labor Day, Tuesday is Election Day, so by city ordinance, we have our City Council meeting on Wednesday, September 7th. Also, Counselor Walsh is not here this evening. He let us know ahead of time, and it's his 40th wedding anniversary today, so just a, a happy anniversary to Counselor Walsh and his wife. And also tomorrow night is the national night out in the city held at Gardner High School, so for the public watching and anyone here this evening, it's a, it's a great event. There's a lot of community resources there, and I know a lot of work goes into it by the Gardner Community Action Team, so just a reminder about that. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn after the closing prayer.
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Boudreaux, seconded by Counselor Mack. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes.
Almighty Father, who sees over all, as we adjourn, we thank thee for the opportunity of joint deliberation and actions witnessed during the course of this meeting. Bless O Lord, all who gather here and the peoples who represent we are, and do thou attend to our common welfare until our next meeting. Amen.
Thank you. Meeting stands here.